It seems like we have hit a point with the Department of Education and the Iowa Department of Health where they're getting ready for the next phase. And the next phase really is beyond summer. They do have decisions to make regarding the athletics and activities. They did come out with a statement because evidently we had, there were some teams that were getting into not baseball fields, but going into athletic facilities and tossing the baseball around or softball around and, and they let them know that was a no-no. And should not be doing that. So, so just a reminder to all of the schools in the state that no means no, and, and that would be for all spring and early summer activities. They really haven't gotten into, they've started to get into what happens if, if they allow schools to start on June 1 or June 15, which quite frankly, you, you don't just start on June 1. It, it takes a lot of organization and lots of kids, especially in a school like Ankeny that will be out, so. That's, that will be interesting to see how that plays out and the time that the governor gives the schools. The other thing is that we are still trying to work out the details on the summer feeding program. They're right now saying that it will not be extended unless something were to happen. And I know Scott and his group are, are trying to work with the federal government to at least extend it into June. And then they have the opportunity to work with different churches. Although I think many of the churches are somewhat taken aback by just the sheer volume and numbers that we were seeing and wondering how they would do it. And so I think that's something that during this next few weeks, we need to begin those discussions. And finally, by July 1, we need to have in place, I believe, is three plans of, of what we are going to do with regard to how we're going to operate. And the state essentially has taken out any volunteer program. The VEO and renamed it. So basically it's required or go to required and go to school. And not really give schools a tremendous amount of flexibility. If your school finds itself in a position like we are now, then we would be required to be delivering teaching and keeping grades and every day. And so one of our groups that, and teaching and learning is that focus of how do we do that? And how do we deliver a viable curriculum with fidelity? And also make sure that all students would have computers, at least at certain levels. And you will find that that is, at least at the superintendent meetings on Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 10 to 11 is the number one concern that schools have is to get a hold of Chromebooks and to deliver them to all grades or at least from grades three on up. And then figure out what the curriculum would be for a kindergartner. That would include technology and the lessons. And so lots of planning to do, one on curriculum, two on technology, and three on how do you help parents? And we would starting to, some thinking about using some people to have, and Des Moines is doing it now because they chose to go the required route, but and they're only doing Monday, Wednesday, Friday, but I think we would want to enter into tech help or just help. Where parents could phone in and we would have a help desk. And we haven't worked out the details, but I think parents need as much help as the kids sometimes. And so we would are working on that. So right now we're waiting for most of that from the state of Iowa. As far as return to learn, we have X number of slides and they have not released. They're still holding the Department of Ed and we're supposed to get it, I think, this week. But we're in a holding pattern until the governor approves it. And everything goes through the governor's office, so. Would be happy to answer any questions and then then I will turn it over to those who are specialists in certain areas, if you have questions, Aaron.
Have we, or when are we going to make a declaration on the start date for next fall with the options there? And whether or not we're going to explore anything creative? I know we have a building that we're working on opening, but anyway, I have a question today from someone, you know. You know, typically these things are set and they don't move, but they just want to know about, you know, if we're going to make a declaration on what that start date is.
Yes, if, if we, if we would have a different year, let's say a year from now. We may be tempted to try to do something with the schedule. It goes, but due to opening a building, our hands are pretty tied as far as trying to get into that building as well as other projects around to get buildings open. The only building, and I think I said it last time, is Forest City. That is really starting early. Pella is going to start at sometime at the beginning of, and they've always wanted to start earlier. The other schools are starting earlier and it could be a week, it could be 10 days. But then what they're doing is then they're taking longer breaks. And 180 days, anyway you slice it, is 180 days. And one of the things that concerns me is some are taking the staff development away, which you really need staff development, especially if we're trying to teach teachers how to teach. Not, not differently so much as how to use technology and how to assess and how to get comments back to families and how to also involve parents. Because it really is a triangulation of three of the parents and of the students dependent upon age and of the teacher.
So, so as far as you know, no other districts are adding days to their contract. It's just about when they're starting.
They're not adding days that I know of, Aaron, and, and there could be. I just, I haven't heard anybody say that. And the reason is, quite frankly, they haven't added, I mean, and it may look like they're adding days, but they're taking them away from somewhere because there's no money to it.
Yeah, well, I just want to make sure.
194 to 197, and we have one of the longest contracts in the metro, so.
Well, if, and, and that's the impression that it will give, that it's starting earlier and going longer. And we just need to A, understand that and B, and make sure that, you know, that, that our families understand that we're working on a return to, you know, learn plan and it's going to start here. I don't care about starting earlier if we're not adding time, because to me, the only point of starting early is to add more time to, to, to the schedule. So that's not what's happening. Just do what works best for us.
Oh, and they, they had to, anybody like West Des Moines had to get their teachers back to the table. And agreed to start, I think, a week earlier. But what they're doing is taking longer breaks and they're going to have a long fall break. And Johnston is another example is cutting out all professional development. And so.
And that I could see, okay, they're going to sneak a few hours into the classroom instead of the PD, but I'm kind of with you. I don't know that that's a big return on that time for taking it away from, from our staff. So if we're not adding actual days on doing 180 and making it 190 or 200 or whatever, then I just want to make sure we understand that as a community.
No, in fact, I I don't know if I said it or typed it in chat or just thought it. But then it, it just was like a flood. I, I thought, I said, where's the money to all of us? And then there were like 20 questions about money. And because if you're going to add a day, then they're going to take one away. Oh.
Okay.
I think the others, the other school of thought around potentially starting a little early, just what I have heard is just in case that, you know, they're saying there could be an outbreak in the fall or early winter. If you can get a head start, if you have to shut down for two or three weeks, then you can still end relatively close to a normal time because you got a one or two week early start as opposed to, so, so to Bruce's point, we're going to have to get the same amount of time in there. You know, it's going to be required. So rather than pushing us till the end of June, if we maybe got a head start, knowing there's potential chances that we, that there could be shut down because of it. I think that's another reason beyond just adding additional contract days to think of starting early.
That's a fair point. That's good.
I've heard the same thing, you know, starting early in case we have to have a break due to a, a second wave.
I think part of it, as all of you have said very accurately, I've heard about another wave. Well, a lot of, a lot of this is I've heard. And if I had someone from the Iowa Department of Public Health or an epidemiologist or infectious diseases that comes to me and says that there is over a 90 whatever percent chance that it's going to happen, but I don't, I mean, everybody is going on an assumption, not a predictive or qualitative or quantitative measure. So everybody is doing it because they've heard that it could happen again. And quite frankly, if they keep loosening up the the standards, then they could be right. You know, that's, that worries me. And but also the kids seem to be pretty resilient as you look at, you know, what's the age levels of, of who it's severely affected. I do not in any way, shape or form want kids in Ankeny to be near each other if we have, and we have not had guidance on that, for example. So I know other states have had kids and they've, they've kept going. And I'm curious to know, what will the government, what will the governor suggest if all of a sudden I have two teachers and two kids?
Yep.
Like, do I close one building down? And then all of a sudden another building? And what's the threshold? I mean, I'm a numbers person and, and the issue, and I wouldn't want their job. But I just would like to know sooner than later about you have to hit a certain percent. And that's, they're not even telling us now what that threshold is. You know, it's a nine. If it's, if it hits a 10, then you are, you can't go out. So anyway, Darren, I don't know.
Oh, Bruce, I had a quick question for you.
Sure.
Just kind of in that, that grain of thinking about next year. Obviously, we're pushing a pretty tight schedule, getting heritage opened and having access early enough before school starts to be able to begin that building just on our day that we said we were going to originally, right?
Yes.
And, and staggering the start of school where you have high school start maybe a week or so earlier versus elementary, that's not, is that something that is maybe on the table, but like fourth in line or?
Great question.
Because you can always throw some extra breaks in for high school students because they can be home by themselves. Where, you know, stagger, like high school, middle school, elementary start dates might be extended out or ramped up because the elementary schools are the ones that are affected by that.
I think part of the issue that we would run into is we have a number of families that have kids that run the gamut of schools. And so there might be issues of I want a start date where they all start. Could it be done? The two things over 33 years that continue to run schools are food and transportation. And so you will pay more in transportation at X number of thousands of dollars a day. And whatever the food cost would be, which would be, and that's if you went a whole day. If that is something the board would like, I think, to look at, then.
I think it's just more anything and everything is on the table. So much you have to listen to me or any particular person, but just, you know.
Right.
You don't have something that's not going to work unless it doesn't work.
Right. And at some point, we do have to draw the line and say, this is what it is. Obviously, letting your families know what are happening, but I, I do like Laurie's line of thinking there. And I don't know what is our really, what is our risk with heritage not opening on time? You know, I don't know how many, this is my sixth or seventh building that we've done since I've been on the board. And, you know, they all have early, late, you know, things in normal situations. So are we at high risk, medium risk, low risk of heritage not opening on time? Because that's one piece of this puzzle. You know, that we'd have to deal with regardless, I suppose. But I kind of like this idea of the spending the money on the transportation and food is almost an insurance plan for high school students, if you will. At least I think of it that way, to build in some potential wiggle room in the schedule that that's feasible, so.
I would ask Tim, if you're attending to turn on your mic. And could you answer that, please?
Samantha might need to bring him in as a panelist here.
I just brought him in, so Tim, you'll have to unmute yourself.
He was probably up the bridge.
Yes.
Tim, did you hear the question?
For me?
Yes.
No, I did not. I had another phone call. What was the question?
I was wondering.
Are we at high, medium or low risk of the building being heritage opening on time?
Low risk, high probability that we'll have it mid-June. Low risk of open on time, high probability that we will have the building mid-June.
Okay.
And having the building means what?
We will take possession of the building and we can start putting Matt's office there. We can, we, we were planning on starting to move furniture in July 1. Once we take over the building, we'll start trans, some of the move, some of the teacher's stuff down to heritage that we already have boxed up over at Terrace.
How many days do you think the transformation would take?
It's going to take us into mid to late July to be ready for school there.
Okay.
But once, I mean, especially if we get all the product, we're, we're not getting, we're not getting rid of any, we're, we're not getting rid of any of the desks and the old chairs, the non-standard issue stuff until we see this, the furniture on site. Our plan would be we could mix and match. If a factory was shut down and say there's no furniture available, we would get around the district and find enough furniture to open that building. We would not let that not keep, keep us from opening. So we're going to save back the stuff we plan on disposing of until the stuff that we plan on using new that reaches, that meets our district standard arrives.
All right. Well, then I think then we should, Bruce, maybe have your team decide this week if that's, makes any difference to your plans in the fall.
We also have a Terrace Early Childhood Center, though, that's probably going to go right to the, probably will be ready about time of school's ready to start.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay.
Get, get all the stuff out of Terrace before you can get Terrace ready to be the preschool.
There's, we actually started some of the construction today. Yeah, so we, Matt Dunsburg and his staff has worked very hard and done a great job the last seven working days of getting their classrooms empty, of getting all the student material down to the gym. The student material pickup starts on Wednesday with the pre-K teachers and the students. And we figured out another drive-by, way to do the drive-by there. And so by Friday, all the student material should be out of Terrace Elementary. And Darren and I, Darren has been working with the principals on how we're going to get the rest of, the Terrace is kind of a different entity. But by Friday, we should have all the student stuff out, all the stuff moved down to the gyms and ready for full, more on construction there, which will be about three weeks early.
Am I right in thinking that our preschools start later than our standard schedule to begin with?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
Good memory. And could they theoretically stay where they are?
I would guess that that.
Stay where they are as in each building right now?
Yes, yes.
Say no.
I would say no.
That would switch every plan.
Each elementary has been kind of remapped to use that space with the, with the attendance and the boundary changes, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just, just want to make sure we get the question answered. Yeah.
Definitely.
And they, they, they've taken, they've taken their space even before they were not out.
Space has been claimed.
Understand that, reclaim it.
Yeah. Bruce, I do.
Of the, majority of pre-K is at Terrace as we speak. So that has to get done to get that started. Of the, what's moving over there is, I think the pre-K already had about a pod and a half of Terrace that we've already all moved out of, and we're going to try to get moved back in by August.
But there is that little bit of extra flexibility because of when their program is supposed to start.
I believe it starts right after Labor Day.
Okay.
Okay, one week.
Right. Times that week is magic. Hey, I did have one more question. It kind of ties in with Katie's question earlier or comment earlier about, you know, what if we have a second wave? Everything we've done now and everything you guys are working on, is it somewhat safe to think that, say, we do have a second wave where, like Katie said, they tell us, okay, everybody's out of school for three weeks? Should it be a fairly turnkey sort of process to, okay, we're going to flip to online learning for three weeks? Or distance learning or whatever we're calling it, since we've kind of built the plane this, this year and, and we'll have the summer to work on it?
You're, you're assuming voluntary?
Well, if everything in the fall, from what Bruce said, is going to be required, no matter what.
Okay.
You know, if everything we've done now and everything they work on over the summer is moving towards the goal of, if the governor decides, okay, on a Friday, that's starting Monday, nobody's in the buildings. You know, can we just kind of flip that page and say, okay, we're converting for three weeks? Because like, you know, we've, we've talked about building the plane while you fly it. Well, we've built a lot of the plane right now and over the summer. Is that kind of that goal of what, of what the summer work is and what this work is now?
That's what we're doing is for, we're, we're building the processes and procedures as far as what do you do in week one, what do you do in week two type of thing? Whereas the teachers, they're the ones that be the content experts and they'll be the ones that will have to teach the classes. Teach the classes um where we will be saying, here are the number of minutes. Your children should be on. Class and doing homework. And, you know, some of the overall general rules. Because.
Friday to Monday is a gross oversimplification.
To work a student for eight hours at home.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, and it's a gross oversimplification to think you can flip it from Friday to Monday, but the theory of. Can you still use that time instead of having it be dead time? You'll have to make up.
But it will be um. The structure will be different.
Sure, sure. But but we're. I'm thinking of my kids. You know, stuff at school where it's like, you know, work with the end in mind. It's like, if we're working towards the goal of, we know that this is a really good potential of happening in the fall. You know, we'd be remiss not to have it in the.
And and I'm concerned about. And I remain concerned about the wireless um connectivity. We're going to have to spend um. Thousands, tens of thousands. In computers just to catch up in computers um. To make sure that all children have what they need. So. And again, that's a not a planned expenditure.
Sure.
So um, and also. And I signed. Something that hopefully the government will sign off on the E-rate. And Jennifer can speak much better on that than I, but. It's it's essentially that we can. We can get our. We can get our money um in a matter. So we're not waiting like some schools who are doing required and they're still waiting on their computers. I mean, this is why we didn't do required. Is because of what they're waiting on. And they have kids that still cannot connect. And so. I know a lot of people wish we had, but um there are just too many people that aren't connected. Where they have lots of kids and their bandwidth won't hold.
Yep. That was all I had for questions, unless you had.
I have a question too, Lori.
We'll do Ryan, then Amy, then Deshers.
Okay.
Just on that. On that vein, um, have Bruce, you had mentioned, and, you know, hearing from parents, you know, even if we had gone back to school. Parents were saying, well, I'm not sending my kids back to school. Are, have you, have you heard any expressed concern about. Uh, parents being reticent to send their kids back in the fall?
Absolutely.
What is, I mean, obviously, that's part of what we have to plan for, but yeah, I'm just like, what does that even look like?
If the, if if they don't see the numbers. Increase or decrease dramatically. You will not see a lot of. And I don't know what a lot is. That's, that's a superintendent number. Um, but but you won't see a lot of kids in school in Ankeny. Their parents are not going to risk. And. Interesting part is the conversations that I think we'll need to have is. Among the board and um. Administration of, what are we going to do?
What are attendance policies like?
Two systems and if we do.
How does that going to be a bigger problem than just Ankeny? We'll have the D E back in our um. Conversation again.
I th- I think you have to um. Lean out, lean back on the governor and the Department of that to tell us. Because.
They're going to have to waive truancy and all sorts of things, or, yeah, that's, that's a bigger than Ankeny problem.
Uh, it's a three hundred and twenty-seven school district problem.
Ryan, did that answer your questions? Great. Amy?
Um, you mentioned, Bruce, when you first started talking about three plans by July first. Are those plans, a few questions about that. Does the board have to approve any of those plans?
No, but you're sure going to see them.
Well, we, and then that was my next question. Will we find out about them July first or shortly thereafter, or will we get some loose framework about?
You're going to see them when we get them done, which hopefully will be June-ish. Um, right now, we're trying to figure out how to get May done. Um, we have people, we, we still don't have. If we, we still can't start working on what we want to show you.
Okay.
And so when we get that, then what we'll do is we'll come up with something and we'll say. The state passed it or the state didn't pass it. So what do you think? Um, and. You tell us what you think and um. You hear from a lot of people as we do and. I think that, I think. For whatever reason, the, the, the state wants more required. They don't call it required this year in this new phase. It's called some, Darren, what's it called?
I haven't seen anything official from the state yet on exactly what this is. So I, any, anything that I would provide you right now, it's just a guess.
Yeah, it's, I've only seen slides. Anyway, um. Yeah, you you'll, you'll see it probably in June. And as soon as, I mean, it's sure something we don't want to hold and. And. It'll, it won't, it'll be very clear because. We'll put it out to the public so that they can see. In Ankeny, starting on August, whatever, this is what's going to happen.
Okay.
And. I I just um. You know, I hope the, the first plan is you start with some, with it basically being much, much better. The second one is you have a few cases of it. And the third is it's just like today. So kind of this. Easy, soft and. Hard or terrible. And so we have to develop plans and. It's very comprehensive. It's not just a little checklist. And so. Um, we have to even, even the um. As far as, I think there's psychology. And counseling and kids being afraid to come back to school and, you know. Been said to them and. You know, um. I've always said. You, you can't be worried about math when you're worried about. All this stuff. So. That's something that the planning team's going to have to figure out. How are you going to? Maybe you may spend a few days just addressing. You also may spend some time. Figuring out what's catching up. At the, at the K-five level versus at the. Middle school level versus at the high school level.
I have a question really quick. Can you hear me?
Yep. Amy, had you gotten your stuff answered?
Yes, thank you.
Fantastic. All right, Tashar, great.
And he may have spoken to this and answering that. So you mentioned that there have been a lot of connectivity issues and um, here, I'll turn the camera on. And um. A delay in districts being able to get the computers for their students. So if we run into a second wave and and we need those computers, is that going to be included in these three plans that you suggested? How we'll prepare for that and ordering early enough and that sort of thing?
The computers are ordered, but yeah, we, we have to do what all the districts are doing now, which is. To go paper. Do it on paper and. And it's. It's very difficult to say the least um. As far as instruction um. The um.
So if we run into this again, then we'll be prepared because we've already ordered the computers that we would need to supply technology for the students.
That would just.
I'm going to go to Darren to check or is Brad on?
We have a quote for what it would cost to get computers to a one-to-one situation kindergarten through third grade. We have not purchased any. We had.
It was eighty thousand.
Eight hundred thousand.
That's what I meant, eight hundred thousand.
Right. And we have received the first shipment of um hotspots that um Brad and Jen read them and are working on getting distributed out to schools. For for those students that are having difficulty with the connectivity from that. So we're one-to-one from fourth grade through twelfth grade. We're one to two or one machine or two students at the lower elementary. So we would need um to buy. Two thousand sub-machines in order to get to one-to-one for. For everybody. And the license, the software licenses and all of that that goes along with warranties.
Darren, did you say they are ordered or are not ordered?
We have a quote, we have not ordered anything.
Okay. But if we.
I'm sorry, how far in advance will we need to order if a second wave hit so that we wouldn't be waiting on computers as schools have been now?
Um, I, I'm going to have, I don't know if Brad is is on and can answer that. I would have to, to share a look through my email real quick and see what the turnaround time is. Second, I can get back to that, but.
Good.
I've had it at my fingertips right here.
Well, that's fine.
Heard that they had him uh. Ready to ship, but I'll, I'll check my email or Samantha, if you see Brad, uh, he might be able to answer that immediately for us.
Darren, if I could kind of piggyback on Tashar's question, um. If for some reason we can't, or there's a backlog or back orders or whatever, forgetting that you said two thousand um. Extra Chromebooks, is there any option maybe for those families who do have. A computer at home that they could use to make, kind of do some sort of, you know, baseline parental survey and say, okay, if we can get. Six hundred, if we can get five hundred, that'll get the hardest-hit kids or the kids who need it the most the quickest. And then we can backfill as we get more those families who maybe have a home computer. But, you know, they can use it for a little while kind of thing.
That's right. So we're um. The answer to so many of these questions tonight is it's part of our contingency planning, which is what we're doing all day, every day. So. We have um dug into our data to determine how many of those, how many students in our district kindergarten through third grade do not have an older brother or sister. In the system. So, so those would be people who don't have. Families wouldn't have a school device at all at home. Um, and so, and the next step is to dig through that data and figure out, okay, so since you don't have a school device. Do you have a device that you could use within the family that would allow you to connect? And so it it's all, it's the same thing that we're doing with our hotspots. We're trying to prioritize um those, those who have no connectivity, get those first and really do the same thing with computers. Brad is looking into the process of um the, the compute, the Chromebooks that our seniors will turn in at the end of this year. Have uh reached probably the end of of a good usable life, but we're going to look at at what it would take. To use those as a stopgap to um to repurpose those for um students who need a device at home. Rather than the, usually those get recycled because again, they've been, and those students again, since seventh grade, they've been, they're on the line, but. Something's better than nothing. So we're looking at that as well.
Okay, thinking of all these things.
Thank you. I just said, thank you for answering that.
Oh, no problem.
Yeah. And thank you for thinking of these things ahead of knowing that we're going to ask questions too. Um, Jim, did you have, I I see your hand, Ryan. Um, Jim had something earlier. I just wanted to make sure. Did. Okay.
Go, we'll just go down the line.
Okay.
Um, just in related to that, I mean, I don't, I don't know possible, what's not possible. So I guess I'm just asking the question, um. You know, is there some sort of precedence um for a business to. Step in and say, hey, listen, we know this is a huge expense. Uh, we're willing to. To do a public-private partnership in some way, shape, or form to, to make this happen so that our students. Can get educated in the case of, of, you know, re-insurgents of this virus.
Uh, Jennifer Jamison.
Jen, i- is that something that? Sorry, she was muted.
Um, I'm sure that's something that we can consider, uh, depending on, I guess, uh, how that was structured with the uh private company and. And that kind of thing, we could definitely maintain that. Uh, but we would need to know a little bit more about how that would be structured in order to be able to accept. And sometimes. You know, depending on, do they want some kind of a. Not a kickback, but you know, some kind of acknowledgement or something like that. We would definitely need to have that reviewed by our legal.
So have you had anyone approach you yet?
No, I have not.
Knowing that it's possible will, is awesome to, to hear. I think even if we were to put that out in some way, shape, or form. You know, just as board members, maybe in our own schools, that that might go a long ways to having somebody reach out. Especially maybe a company that's willing to just and not try to make it a tit-for-tat relationship.
So Darren, that was two thousand Chromebooks? Just to have that number floating out there again?
Well, yeah, that's my ballpark. If you figure about a thousand students per class.
I just wanted to make sure we all heard the same number. Does anyone have any additional questions for Bruce or Darren, or I guess anyone administratively with the COVID plans? Oh, Jim, okay.
So did I miss something? Have we had additional plans for graduation ceremony or is that coming later?
Uh, we do have something for graduation. And we sent it out. Uh, to parents. Parents, I think. Which I think you.
This parent got an email.
Uh, did we get that?
Can, yeah, can I ask if you're sending stuff that's specific to a certain population that the board gets a copy? Like, we got a lot of emails about graduation, but I never saw the original survey to know what anybody was talking about. So I wasn't gonna, I won't fill it out, I promise, but just to be able to see.
I'm not worried about that. It was, it was. I think it was two questions. I mean. Yeah, that's, that's no big deal.
Yeah, there was a time in the past where the board got copied on all those, you know, though. Then it got to be, we're emailing everything and, and it was too much. And so, you know, I think. In this particular case, if it's related to these major changes in plans, it's good for us to know. Because we usually get these, hey, thanks for that, which I got um, for the graduation thing. I'm like, oh, there must have been an email. So.
So, so there's.
I didn't get, I didn't think about that because I got the email because I'm a senior parent, but.
Oh, my question is then, so we sent something out separate from what we, what was uh, available last Monday. So there. There were other choices on the table or, or did we change some things? I don't know anything.
Yeah, Jim, let me, let me go ahead and ex- explain. So. Um, the first thing we did was show the. The, like transparency. We let people know what the vote was. They could see. How really lopsided the vote was with regard to. Versus anything else. And you could add anything and everything else and. It would come up to half. So what we did was we decided that um. We're playing uh, I, I'll guess the governor, governor game. So we pushed it back a week. And. We would have a better chance in, at the end of the month. To get in. And they said, you can have either one.
What are these? June what? I can't remember.
And so we're in June. And so June twenty nine, twenty.
Okay.
And um. And so, uh. Looking up.
Would you like me to give an overview of the options?
So it's, it says for plan, we're pleased to announce our plan to honor the class of twenty twenty. As you know. We collected feedback this past week from both parents and students. And received an incredible response from both. The results are attached and we showed what the parents said and what the survey said, or students said. And it's clear from the results of the survey that most parents and students. Want to find a way to celebrate with the traditional commencement ceremony. At a time when the COVID restrictions are gather, are lifted. It's also clear to us that the alternate formats. Need to be available in the event that closures continue. Due to this pandemic. So one change we made. Since collecting survey feedback, individual contacts and reviewing state and federal guidelines. Is to move the first date to June twenty seventh. And we believe this will allow us the greatest likelihood. Of being able to move forward with the ceremony at Hilton. As a result, we developed a plan. And so the first one is June twenty seventh. And ten, ten and one, the sheer Ankeny High goes first. And that's at Hilton. Then the alternate is July twenty fifth, which is, we believe, the latest we can go. Should the government restrict on gatherings not being lifted by the end of June, Saturday, July twenty fifth will serve as a backup date. And we'll notify you June twenty fourth if we need to switch the July date. And if we're unable to have the ceremony on July fifth. Due to weather, we'll have it on the twenty sixth. Now, this is gonna take. Lot of work because we're going to have to. Put chairs on the field at the right space. We're going to have to. Tape or rope off at certain intervals, the bleachers. And again, ten and one at, at Ankeny Stadium. And then if it continues, then. Whether, whether it happens or doesn't, we're still going to video this. So. We do have a backup, but a video will be available as a backup for an in-person commencement ceremony. This video will be distributed following an in-person commencement. Or in place of it, should the three other dates not work out. As part of the virtual commencement video, we will be collecting information. To create personal slides, slides for each student. You and your student will receive additional information. About how to submit this information in the near future. Working hard to prepare. For these options and provide the Ankeny commencement experience. We're committed to making it a special memory for the class of twenty twenty and our families. And then we have several other traditional ways. We're celebrating seniors' final year. With Ankeny Schools. One is the Senior Signing Night. And our activity directors are moving forward with a virtual signing night. And they're gonna do it on Facebook Live. And that will be on May sixth. Repeat, May sixth at six thirty PM on Facebook Live. And then Senior Spotlight. Night, we will be holding a virtual Senior Spotlight Night. As well to honor our class of twenty twenty. These celebrations will be shared in the following ways. And then the videos will be distributed on May twenty sixth at seven PM. And same thing at Centennial. We've also added another way to celebrate the class of twenty twenty since our school closure has not allowed. Our staff to send them off in person this spring. Between May sixteenth and May twenty fourth. Each student in the class of twenty twenty. Will receive yard signs celebrating their commencement. These yard signs will be delivered by members of our high school staff. In addition to their academic careers, these past months have taught the class of twenty twenty. Resilience in the face of adversity. And we're confident in sending them off to their future success. Thank you for partnering with us. As we celebrate the thirteen years of work these students have put in to reach this milestone. Ankeny Community School District.
Thanks.
In case you didn't remember all of that, um, I forwarded all of you guys the email that I got. Um, which is just the concrete of what Bruce just said. So it should be in your, uh, school board emails.
Saw it, thanks. And then, um, another one, we talked a little bit last week and then said to stop until this week, but. We got a lot of kids switching schools, obviously, with the opening of Heritage and kids changing boundaries and all that stuff. And I just had talked about if there are any plans. I know this is probably fairly low on the list, but um, with all those transitions. I know the schools are gonna try to do some things for those kids so that's a smooth transition. Are we anywhere with that, Bruce?
Like if the, if the social distancing and all this stuff is affecting our timelines on those?
Yeah, I mean, everything. I mean, is there a backup plan for how we'll do that if we get to go back to school? I guess.
Jim, I would say that um. If it, if it can happen, it will. And. And it's especially important since. Kids haven't been at school literally. So it's kind of a double, triple, you pick the number. And um. I mean, we've talked even at a bigger level about. Other schools and what do they do and. We don't. There's, if you've been reading the literature, which. Unfortunately, I, I have um. One of the side effects in many of the studies. Is to make too big of a deal out of this. Especially if. You know, mom and dad are. Upset and, and all of that. So I would just say that um. The, the thing that we have to be careful about is that we don't add to the. Drama, but create events that. Are more kid-friendly. And the focus is on the kids. And the bottom line is we'll take care of the kids, we promise. Uh, as we do every year. We have no control over the coronavirus other than following the. Uh, safe. Safeguards has put forth by the Iowa Department of Public Health. And so um. What we're doing now is. And Al Nepel um. Deserves a shout out and, and. Uh, congratulations with his team. Because he is planning. How to move everything. And also the teachers and how to move their stuff. And the bottom line is patience. And sometimes. People cannot be patient. And so that's our word that we're trying to emphasize with. All, everybody. With administrators and, and central office and. You know, some people may become emotional. And they haven't been in their room. I think we have eleven people retiring. Um, and they haven't been in their room maybe. So um. It's, it's something that, it's not the way we want to end the year. But we have to end the year and continue to move on. And. I think Aaron said it well about move forward. And I read a book that said. That was quoted about, you can't really walk backwards, you have to walk forward. And so that's what we as a group of leaders and. You as a board and us as administrators. As tough as it can be during these next couple of months, we need to continue to walk forward and help those who. Uh, maybe need a little help.
Hey, Jim, if it, as a parent perspective, um. My third child is moving from fifth grade to Parkview this year. I've already gotten emails about. You know, like they missed their go visit the middle school day. I've gotten emails about how they're, I've already, I mean, it was last week. I got an email about, from Parkview. About how they're gonna work on making sure that transition happens. I know if you're not a parent and you don't get these emails, you're. It's hard to know, but um. As a parent who's, you know, I've got a senior, I've got one going into middle school, I've got one going into high school, we've been receiving emails from, at the building level. About all of those things. So those teachers and those buildings are really. And, and they're, they're making the kids excited about it. And so it's being handled from my perspective really well.
Well, that's all good to know. And I, I know what Bruce said to Al Nepel was in charge of uh, some of that activity and Al's super organized. So I know with Al in charge, it'll go well. Uh, so I appreciate that. Uh, my last question was just um. I, I had a parent share a concern about people going through the lunch lines. To pick up packets and they don't necessarily need food, but then their kids are in the car, so they. Go ahead and grab the food and then they're worried about people who need the food and it's run out by the time they get there. So parents suggested that we maybe have one school where you just pick up packets so that those people that just need packets but not food, don't get into the food line. I know that we don't ask any questions about people being in the food line, but. This parent was just concerned about people going through the food line that really didn't need it. And I just said I'd pass it on.
Isn't there a packet pickup only school already?
Is there?
There was at one time.
Yes, Ashland Drake.
That's good to know. Now everyone knows again.
I didn't know that, yeah.
I didn't know either. But now that you bring it up, Amy, I think you're right. I remember hearing that, but I forgot. That's all I have.
Okay, any additional questions? Otherwise we will. Forward with our next agenda item. I don't see any hands. All right, um, next up on the agenda were the twenty twenty-one student fees and nutrition prices. Who is presenting on that?
I can speak to that. Uh, so in the packet, you'll find the recommendations for the meal prices for next year. Um, all of those meal prices will continue to keep us in the median range for metro schools and other comparable districts around Iowa. Um, there is an increase to the adult price and that's mandated by the USDA. And at the same time, uh, we recommend. That our second student lunch price equal the adult meal price, since we do not get a reimbursement for those meals. Um, are also our breakfast prices are increasing, um, since we will be offering more customized options. Each week at grade six through twelve, that would be a, a bit more labor-intensive. And an example of that is like Build a Blue Though. Um, that was provided to me. So um, that's why we're having that additional cost increase for the breakfast prices. Whether, and on behalf of you, is there other questions or anything I can't answer? I'm sure Scott's on the line too.
Does anyone have any questions for either Scott or Jennifer about those student fees?
I just wanna, I just have a question about my sanity. Didn't we already see these once?
We saw everything but the nutrition prices. And the reason for that is that uh, it takes a little while for the tool that's used to calculate nutrition prices. To become available. So and we like to wait a little bit later in the year till we have all the data that we need to make those recommendations. So you're not crazy. So.
That's all I was wondering.
Good memory.
I just wondered what a second lunch was. Is that literally going through the line the second time? Is that right?
Yes, I believe so. And that's the piece that's increasing to uh, agree to the same as the adult price. Because uh, we don't get a reimbursement for a second meal.
Yeah, it's Katie, it's literally coming through and getting an entire second lunch or getting something that would constitute what was a reimbursable meal. Most kids come through and get an extra entree. Um, but if they would come through and want an extra carton of milk and extra veggies and fruits, um, then that would be a second meal. And I looked up the last two years and we've sold. Less than twenty per year, second meals. So it's not a, a big thing.
Okay.
Football season.
Yeah, I was, I was just curious why the cost was different, but that makes sense. And I'll make sure I have a conversation with my going-to-be eighth grader about what he takes. So he goes through the lunch line. So, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Nope, all right. Up next, I have a motion to approve the contracts and agreements as presented.
Motion.
Second.
There's about five different ones in there. Does anyone have any questions on those? There's about five different ones in there. Does anyone have any questions on those?
Go ahead. A couple of them are athletic related. And are we, going back to COVID, are we, is there contingency plans if athletics isn't happening? Do we have to abide by those contracts? Have we thought about that?
You might be talking about the scoreboard agreement.
Yeah.
And those are for the two signs in our gymnasiums, as well as the large sign out at the stadium. And that's for the advertising revenue that is sold by the vendor varsity group. And then we get a kickback on a percentage of those sales. And I think if I remember right, there is a minimum amount that we're entitled to per that agreement.
Okay.
I'm trying to find it here. One second. So all these leader and me agreements. Minimum guaranteed payment of $35,000 for each year of the contract.
Okay. So even if there's no butts in the seats, we get
Yep, that would be my interpretation.
Okay. And then as far as leader and me, was heritage going to be added to that under a different contract or?
Yes, that's correct. We don't have the heritage one just yet, but it will be coming. All, in total, we'll have all 10 elementarys and one primary bridge middle school for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ryan?
Just want to, I'm curious about the waste management contract, the, how that's supposed to read. On, so it, it has a quantity column. It has a frequency column and has the monthly rate. Are they, is the monthly rate, is that basically a multiplier of the frequency? And then if, like, there's one school that has a quantity of two, which is around $751.68 for that monthly rate? Is that, am I reading that correct? Is that how that math works out? And why does that school have two quantities? Basically, is that, I mean, is that 10 pickups a month? Northview Middle School, it's the third from the bottom column.
Yeah, Northview would be the one exception because of the stadium being located there and the extra pickups required after events. I, I do not know exactly the answer to your question as to whether the frequency is the times, the rate to equal what our bill is every month. But these are the same rates that we've been paying for the previous three years. So it's just another one extension. We've talked about this at finance. And Lori had actually brought this up a while about looking at the recycling services that we were provided and maybe doing some restructuring of that. It's just with, you know, under the circumstances with the closures, we thought it would make the most sense to just continue for one more year. That's allowed in the contract. And then we'll look at Darren and the operations team look at doing an RFP earlier in the year next year.
Thanks for clarifying.
I saw that as well, Ryan. I think it's, you know, frequency is also related to container size. And if you have a small versus a medium versus a large dumpster and all that kind of stuff too. So yeah, I saw what you were looking at too. But I'm glad to hear Jennifer say about that they were going to still put the recycling into the mix for the next time because I don't, I didn't talked about, we had a formal recycling agreement. I know that's something that's come up from the building levels, it's come up from students, all that kind of stuff. Cause we can definitely improve on that in our buildings, for sure. So I'm glad to see that that is still on the radar. Any more questions related to the contracts? Nope, I don't see anybody. Okay, all in favor of approving the contracts and agreements as presented?
Yes.
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 Yes. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Item is our bond. I need a, I need a motion to approve the sale of bonds as presented.
Second.
And Jennifer, I believe you had some information to share with us?
Yeah, so we had our bond sale today and got some good news regarding the bids. And on the line with us, we have Suzanne with Public Financial, PFM, who is our bond financial advisor. And she's going to review with you the handout that you provided this evening with those bid results. So Samantha, do you, are you able to get Suzanne signed on?
She should be on mute. All right, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, excellent. So we went to market today for the two high school additions. That's the, the projects that we're financing. S and P affirmed the district's A plus rating on the sales tax revenue bonds. This is, of course, the pledged revenue is the statewide penny revenues that come in for the district. We also included current refunding of the existing 2012 bonds for funding savings today. And so I'm happy to report that we received five bids from over 36 different firms. As you can imagine, in today's COVID-19 environment, I was a little about taking sales tax revenue bonds to the market. But because these are relatively short, these are maturing within the current 2029 program sunset. These don't go out the full 20 years. And because of the strong credit and I think recognition for Ankeny School District, these bidders that came to the table today are what I'll consider the premier Wall Street bidders. We have the Morgan Stanleys, the Citigroup's, the JP Morgans, the Wells Fargos, and then a large syndicate from Robert W. Baird. So I'm very pleased with the results. The true interest cost, that kind of aggregated percentage rate ranges from 1.86. I'm thrilled that we're under 2%. The winning bid was 1.86 and the last bid was a 2.59%. So very wide range of bids today. Obviously different opinions of risk. And when we look at the first place bid at the 186 and even the second place bid coming in at a 2.19%. I'm recommending obviously the 186. I'm thrilled with that rate. So Morgan Stanley in syndicate with seven other syndicate members was the winning bid today. And I am extremely excited to share the refunding savings. Our goal with the current refunding is to save at least 3% of the debt service. And today we're saving 5.67% or roughly $533,000 in present value savings. That equates to around $65,000 in savings that has helped paying for, immediately pay for these two new projects, the two high school additions that we're bringing on. So you know, PFM made some conservative assumptions for next year in the cash flow and you know, these bonds fit within the parity test with all the requirements of the program and the existing bond covenants. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Suzanne, I had a quick question. You said you were pretty conservative with next year's state revenues and all that. Obviously, if a recession rolls for more than one year, especially, you know, with the potential for a resurgence of the virus next year and that, how low does it have to get before we have to, I guess, be more concerned about some of this?
So the, the, the good news is that these bonds and your existing bonds can be paid for. It's the future projects. I think they're in jeopardy if things were to change or not recover. I've assumed a 12 and a half percent reduction next year, which I feel is very conservative. And then I'm showing a very slow recovery. I'm not showing a recovery immediately the next year. So we're growing back into it. So we're being very conservative and we're still able to afford the future, you know, the elementary 12 and some of the other projects down the line. And we're just watching those very closely. And obviously, you know, those are, I would say that the existing bonds I'm not concerned about. I think that because you're a growing school district, I think that even if the statewide average shrinks a little bit, there's plenty of room. It's just the future projects I would be more concerned about. And if we see a recession, then possibly you won't be growing in students as much either. But I think that because you're the growing school district, I think that that gives you a little bit of a tailwind to recover faster from a reduction in statewide penny revenues.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have questions for either Jennifer or Suzanne? No, I don't see anyone. Okay, do I have a, all in favor of approving, sorry to turn my page, the sale of bonds as presented?
Yes.
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 Yes. Any opposed? All right, thank you all very much. I do not have any new business. Board member reports, I'm going to just go across my screen here. It may not match everybody else's, hopefully. Aaron, I'll start with you.
The other thing I have, you know, it's just not time to have teacher appreciation and give a virtual high five to our working folks out there trying to keep every learning, everybody's still learning. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Amy?
Um, piggyback on what Aaron said, I'd like to thank all the teachers, all the the households that are new to teaching, should be, get a little shout out as well. And the the professional teachers who are teaching the new households how to teach. They all deserve a big shout out. Everybody who has a hand in education gets a big shout out.
Great. Jim?
Echo the same thing. Thanks to all of our teachers and really everyone that's working on all these plans, all those teams in the academic services. I can't imagine how overwhelming that is. So thanks to all the people that are trying to keep educating our kids in this crazy time. So thanks to all of them.
Just did what everybody says. Just thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the work that everybody's doing. I just really appreciate it.
Ryan?
Ditto.
It's good to share.
Same here.
Same here. Keep it brief. Superintendent Bruce, what have you got?
I sent something out earlier thanking all the teachers and and putting quotes around it. I, I don't know many people that walk through our buildings that don't run into teachers. I don't think you have to go to school. We have teachers spread throughout. They may not be called a teacher. But there are people that you remember and there are people who you remember how they made you feel. And those were the people that still today made many of us go into teaching. And so I thank them. Especially no one could have prepared any of us for this. And we, we have worked very, very hard to to try to get through this. We will get better at it, unfortunately. Because I don't see it going away. And and hopefully science and those involved in research will be able to do their jobs and, and do them well. The other thing is in each of your rooms, you should have found a very plat, a little plaque. Somebody could, you could hold it up. Yes, we, we went out, we went all out on these. So
It's Monday.
You can put these on your wall of fame at home. If somebody would have told you that you would have had five, six board meetings in a row. You probably want to get ahold of the people who got you to run for the scoreboard. As well as everything from home, or home, not homecoming.
Wrong.
And graduation. And I just keep telling myself and it has proven true and my wife will remind me. So it always works out in the end and it does. I sometimes I don't like what we have to do to get through to that point. But and I would like to, I will never be a board member. And as those who've been around me know, I use that maybe the title of the book. Because of the sheer hours. And for that, you have my greatest admiration. And sincere thanks. So that's all I have.
Before we go into our closed session, I will just do a public announcement. We do have a public vote at the end of our first closed session. That is a motion to approve the 18 through 23 AEA ratified negotiated contract as presented. So I just want to make sure that people know that they, we will have a closed session. We will come back out of it and hold a public vote. So.
We're going to stay online? What's the procedure for this?
It is our procedure.
Yep, you'll stay online and I will put you into an online closed session. Are you, oh, you need to vote first.
Yeah.
So I need a motion to go into closed strategy session. Is that, is that the roll call? To go in or is it just a?
Roll.
Okay. Roll call on that.
Hold on.
I'm sorry. Yes. Melissa?
Yeah, you actually don't need to vote since it's an exempt session. What you should do is just reset and go into your exempt session.
All right. At 6:31, we will recess and go into our exempt strategy session. Samantha, just let us.
All right, sorry, it muted every time you switch back and forth.
Okay, so are we ready to, so we're back open and we can present our motion?
Yep.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the 2018-23 AEA ratified negotiated contract as presented.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Contract approved. And before we take our vote, I have been remiss, I forgot to, since we're so public, I can say it and it'll be recorded for posterity. Josie Lewis is leaving us on Friday and we are all desperately sad. And I just want to thank her for every single thing that she has done during her time here in Ankeny. And missed, sent us reports and happy pictures of glorious views in Colorado.
Thank you, Lori. I appreciate that. If anybody knows someone that needs a house that's been freshly painted on the inside, just send them my way.
Mine have a couple really cool neighbors.
Thank you.
That may or may not entice you to buy the house. Sorry, that may have tanked your sales. But I now need a motion to go into closed session.
Motion.
And Jennifer, is that a roll call vote? Thank you, Jen.
Sorry, can't hear my head rattle. So all right.
Okay, we'll, we'll start from just how you appear on my screen. Director Talley Rini?
Yes.
Director Johnson?
Yes.
Director Ford?
Yes.
Director Klaus?
Thank you.
Director Weldon?
Yes.
Director Bohanna?
Yes.
And Director Lobstad?
Yes.
Okay, can I just ask, are we not going to be on this anymore? Or are we all?
Yes, too many recessed and moved to the new location.
Yes, too many recessed and moved to the new location.
Right. Um, we'll take a five minute break. Um, we will be distancing in the boardroom if everyone is comfortable. If they're not, they can stay where they're at. Um, but yeah, once we are we in, we voted in?
Yep, you're in.
Okay, we're in closed session.
So I'm turning my, so I'm turning my computer off? Okay, sorry.
It'll be recorded like any other closed session that we have in the boardroom. Okay. We're going to scat, we're going to, I mean, probably we can have like three people up here, couple people, one person at each table.